Good evening. I am Brian Nichols, Acting Superintendent of Newport News Public Schools, and I'd like to welcome you to the School Board's Oath of Office Ceremony. I am pleased that you can join us this evening to witness the swearing-in of four recently-elected and re-elected School Board members. So returning to the Board, we have Mr. Gary Hunter. At-large, Mr. Douglas Brown, representing the North District. Newly-elected to the Board are Dr. Terry Best, who's representing the South District, and Mrs. Lisa Searls-Law, representing the Central District. Both of whom will officially take office on July 1st. Also taking office on July 1st, and we're excited to recognize Superintendent of Newport News Public Schools, Dr. George Parker. So Dr. Parker will also be sworn in this evening. Before we begin the actual ceremony, I'd like to recognize some of our special guests and dignitaries who are attending this evening, starting with our elected officials. So representing Congress in Bobby Scott's office, we have Joni Ivy. I know Joni's not technically representing Congressman Scott anymore, but... We have Delegate David Yanty was here. Not sure if David's made it back yet. We have Hannah Cannon, who's the aide to Delegate Mike Mullin is here. From our City Council, we have Vice Mayor Tina Vick. City Councilwoman Dr. Pat Woodbury is with us as well. And we also have Councilman-elect David Jenkins is with us today. We have several community leaders here with us as well. We have John McMillan, who's a former School Board Chairman. We also have Jim Batterson, who's a former School Board Chairman. I think we're setting a record for School Board Chairman tonight, both former and current. Valencia Gross, who's PTA Council President, is here. And then we also have Bob McKenna from the Chamber of Commerce. He's the President of Chamber of Commerce, great partner of ours. Thank you, Bob. Now to acknowledge our current Board members who are here with us tonight, we have Board Member Marvin Harris. At this time, I'd also like to thank the family members of our School Board members, Members-Elect and Superintendent. I ask you to stand because I want to publicly thank you for your support, not only supporting your family member who's here tonight and will be sworn in, but ultimately what's the support of almost 30,000 kids, staff, community, faculty, and so forth. We couldn't do it without you, so thank you for giving and lending us their talents. So thank you. To certify the election and present the certificates, I'd like to ask Mr. Sean Devlin, Chairman of the Electoral Board, to come forward. He'll be assisted by Ms. Dolores Thomas, Vice Chairman, and Mr. Wendell Barber, Secretary. If you guys will please come forward.
Thank you, and it's an honor and a pleasure for us to be here tonight to present the results of the Board of Elections to this past, in May. The Commonwealth of Virginia, to all whom these presents shall come greeting. Could I have Mr. Gary Hunter, please, come forward? The Commonwealth of Virginia, to all of those present shall come greeting. This is to certify that at a meeting of the Electoral Board of the City of Newport News, Virginia, held on May 2nd, 2018, on an examination of the official records deposited in the office of the Clerk of the Circuit Court, it was ascertained and determined that at the election held on May 1st, 2018, Gary B. Hunter was duly-elected member of School Board-at-Large for a term commencing July 1st, 2018, and ending July 30th, 2022. Witnessed the following official signature and the seal of the Board at Newport News, Virginia, the 5th day of June, 2018, Wendell Barber, Secretary. Sir, congratulations.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Dolores Thomas, Vice Chair of the Electoral Board. Commonwealth of Virginia, to all to whom these presents shall come greeting. This, may I ask, Terry Best, to please come forward. This is to certify that at the meeting of the Electoral Board of the City of Newport News, Virginia, held on May 2nd, 2018, on an examination of the official records deposited in the office of the Clerk of the Circuit Court, it was ascertained and determined that at the election held on May 1st, 2018, Terry L. Best was duly-elected member of School Board, South District, for the term commencing July 1, 2018, and ending June 30, 2022. Witnessed the following official signature and the seal of the Board at Newport News, Virginia, this 5th day of June, 2018, Signed, Wendell Barber, Secretary. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask Lisa R. Searls-Law to please come forward. Commonwealth of Virginia, to all to whom these presents shall come greeting. This is to certify that at a meeting of the Electoral Board of the City of Newport News, Virginia, held on May 2nd, 2018, on an examination of the official records deposited in the office of the Clerk of the Circuit Court, it was ascertained and determined that at the election held on May 1st, 2018, Lisa R. Searls-Law was duly-elected member of School Board, Central District, for a term commencing July 1, 2018, and ending June 30, 2022. Witnessed the following official signature and the seal of the Board at Newport News, Virginia, the 5th day of June, 2018, Signed, Wendell Barber, Secretary.
You notice Dolores got two to do. That's because she's a new kid on the block. She's a newest member on the Board of Elections. And could Mr. Brown Jr., please, come up? Commonwealth of Virginia, to all to whom these presents shall come greeting. This is to certify that at a meeting of the Electoral Board of the City of Newport News, Virginia, held on May 2nd, 2018, on an examination of the official records deposited in the office of the Clerk of the Circuit Court, it was ascertained and determined that at the election held on May 1, 2018, Douglas C. Brown was duly-elected member of School Board, North District, for a term commencing July 1, 2018, and ending June 30, 2022. Witnessed the following official signature and the seal of the Board at Newport News, Virginia, this 5th day of June, 2018, Signed, Wendell Barber, Secretary. Congratulations.
I'd like to thank Mr. Devlin, Ms. Thomas, and Mr. Barber for presenting the certificates this evening. Thank you very much. And now for the very special part of the ceremony, the Oath of Office. We have Mrs. Tracy Hayes, the Assistant Chief Deputy Clerk of the Circuit Court. She'll come forward to administer the oath of office to our newly-elected Board members and our new Superintendent.
I, Dr. Terry Best, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform the duties incumbent upon me as a member of the Newport News School Board, South District, for a term of four years beginning July 1, 2018, according to the best of my abilities, so help me, God. Do you so swear?
I do. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, the right hand. Douglas Brown, Sr.? Please raise your right hand. I, Douglas Brown, Sr., do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me as a member of the Newport News School Board, North District, for a term of four years beginning July 1, 2018, according to the best of my abilities, so help me, God. Do you so swear?
I do.
Thank you. Just need to sign. Gary Hunter? Please raise your right hand. I, Gary Hunter, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me as a member of the Newport News School Board-at-Large for a term of four years beginning July 1, 2018, according to the best of my abilities, so help me, God. Do you so swear?
No. I do, sorry.
Please raise your right hand. I, Lisa Searls-Law, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me as a member of the Newport News School Board, Central District, for a term of four years beginning July 1, 2018, according to the best of my abilities, so help me, God. Do you so swear?
I will. Thank you.
And Dr. George Parker III. Please raise your right hand. I, George Parker III, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me as Superintendent of Newport News Public Schools, according to the best of my abilities, so help me, God. Do you so swear? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hayes, and congratulations to our new Board members and Superintendent. We have other distinguished guests with us today. From our City Council, Councilwoman Sharon Scott is here with us. And also from Congressman Scott's office, Gigi Russell is with us. At this time, I'd like to invite each Board member and our new Superintendent to make some brief comments, so we'll start with Dr. Best. If you would come forward. We'll be followed by Mr. Brown, Mr. Hunter, Mrs. Searls-Law, and Superintendent Dr. Parker. That's your first test, you gotta remember that order.
Good evening. I humbly stand before you this evening with heartfelt gratitude. I would first like to thank God, my parents, my father, the Lake Claude Best, and my mother, Margaret Best, my family, friends, neighbors, the village, and the voters who believed in me. Finally, I would like to thank those that are present to support me today, and I am honored that you are here. I want you to know that I do not take this ceremony lightly. I promise that I will do everything in my power to fulfill the oath that I have just taken. When I campaigned for office, I said that I would be the change that we need and the voice that we deserve. I'm repeating this promise in this distinguished company and to all that are listening, because this is what this ceremony is all about. It is a public promise to carry out my duties guided by no interest other than what is best for the children. I will conduct myself with integrity, learn from the past, but not dwell in the past, adjusting as needed to improve, always striving to be better. Fellow Board members, newly and elected, Dr. Parker, Newport News Public School staff, I look forward to getting to know you and to learning more from you as we work to advance our school division. Let me close by offering my heartfelt thanks for the many messages I have received since the election from individuals around the city who have called or written to wish me well. It is my intent to do my very best to meet the challenge that lie ahead as we prepare students for the future. Thank you for coming today, and may God bless you.
Good afternoon. I too would like to thank God for this momentous occasion and this awesome opportunity to be once again your School Board representative. But first, I'd like to take a pause, a moment of silence, for my opponent, Ms. Burnett, who passed away just prior to graduation. Thank you, and I think on an occasion like this, it is important to reflect on the type of commitment to service that it takes to do a job such as this. Ms. Burnett gave 25 years of her life to law enforcement, and then another four years of her life to serving on the School Board, and I think the commitment level that she demonstrated set a great example for all of us to follow. I always told her personally and publicly that I respected her service and respected what she had done on the Board, and that she had always done a good job, and I simply thought that I could do a better job. But in competing with each other, we always had great respect and admiration for one another, and it is that respect and admiration that I think has made our community a better place, and I wish her and her family the best, and I'm very sorry to hear of her passing. That being said, I want to thank a few people who, in particular, were very instrumental, I believe, in helping me to get to this point, my family, of course, first and foremost in my life. I want to say to my children, I'm sorry for all the time that I was not able to be there with you because of this job, and I know the sacrifices that you have made to allow me to be on the School Board and to help our community. Those sacrifices do not go unnoticed by myself, and I know that it has not come without a cost to you, and I appreciate all the support and help that you've given me through the last four years. To all the young people who volunteered and helped with the campaign, like Mr. Jalen Waller, appreciate folks like himself went around. That's proof that Newport News is producing college career and citizen-ready kids. While he was working on my campaign, worked on his Eagle Scout medal, simultaneously went around, knocked on doors, and now he's going to George Mason University to study information technology. So proof positive that we have great citizens in our community who are working and volunteering and doing all the right things, and that's what we're gonna be doing in the next four years. We're gonna be continuing to do all the right things for our children and continuing to make a path to move forward. This last four years, we've gotten that American Mathematics Competition, that's a real, to me, it's a really big deal. That was something that I didn't have when I was coming up, was that American Mathematics Competition, something that allows a child to stand out, because what I believe education is about principally first is about inspiration, about finding something that you're truly passionate about, finding a talent that you have, learning that early on, and then using your education to cultivate that talent while you build a well-rounded understanding of the world. You've gotta study all the subjects, but you should have a passion and a talent, and I think things like the American Mathematics Competition, the Engineering Design Challenges, and all the other things that we've done that are helping kids to cultivate and identify their talents are the things that we want to continue to pursue and continue to do. So I'm very proud and thankful to have this job, and I look forward to working with all of you in the future and making our city and our community a better place.
Again, good evening, Gary Hunter. Again, I would like to start off by saying, thank, Lord, for all of us, and thank those who went out and voted for me. Again, my main support is my wife. I'd like for her to stand. She, we are kind of a dynamic duo in our campaign this year, and my daughter, my oldest daughter is here, 'cause she's also pleased to stand. My youngest daughter's not able to be with us because she's doing an intern, so, as again, we do have folks that are college, college career and citizen-ready. Again, this is a long time, from four years ago. I recall standing here, and I had won by 38 votes. This year, I didn't have an opponent, and I think I won something about 13,000 votes. And so that in itself is kind of an accomplishment that tells me that maybe we're doing something right. Maybe I did something right this year and for the last four years, and I want to thank each one of those folks that came out and voted, supported. As your Chair of last year, we had a tough road, but we had a very, very important road, and I think we're gonna move this school system forward. Dr. Parker's here. It was a challenge, I was glad that I was there at the Chair during this particular time, and so I want to thank all those groups out there, from the GOP to the NAACP to Newport News School, Teachers Association, all the churches, all those social groups who've actually stood behind us while we made this most important decision for the city, because, you know, everything starts with our students, right? Starts with students. The students are our future, and if we don't have, we don't get them when they're three years old, we're definitely not gonna get them when they're 13 years old. And so this is the person that we were looking for, this is what we were after, to find someone and find that important person that would lead us to the next drive. So Newport News here, where great things are happening, I'm looking for even better things that are happening, and again, as I said before, every decision that I did make this year and those four years coming would be through a funnel, funnel through that decision of what is best for our students, our teachers, faculty, and administrations.
I am so humbled by this celebrated occasion. I want to thank my husband, who has helped me realize I can be strong beyond measure, and to my daughter, who has a promising future as an encourager and a problem solver. I love you both. The process to get to this day took so many supporters, many of whom are here with us today, whether you prayed, advised, put signs up, took signs down, kept the campaign finances in order, canvassed, assisted with mailings, or spent time at the polls. Please stand for me. I thank you for your dedication and gift of time. I always marvel at teamwork well done, and in fact, over the years working with Newport News Public Schools in my role at Jefferson Lab, I've admired the collaborative effort that embodies our school system. It was an honor to receive our citizens' votes, and it's an absolute honor to serve with this team as a member of the Board strives to govern with integrity and with purpose. I extend a heartfelt welcome to Dr. Parker. Welcome to Newport News, and more importantly, to Newport News Public Schools, our city's most precious gym. I look forward to working with you to provide our students with a dynamic, applicable, and enriching education, focusing on, yes, academics, but also character development, problem-solving skills, and an opportunity to become responsible citizens. Specifically, I hope to bring to the effort a sound voice, a temperament that promotes dialogue and constructive analysis within our Board, as well as with our city officials. And I also want to bring, most of all, a passion that helps lead our schools to the best places for our teachers and staff to elevate our students. It's a great day to live in the Commonwealth. I've always wanted to say that. It truly is a bright direction for Newport News Public Schools.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to serve as the next Superintendent of Newport News City Public Schools. I would like to say that I'm humbled this evening to stand before you with this opportunity to lead a school division that is already doing great work for this community. I'd like to, one, ask my wife to stand, Tanya. I think most of you have already met Tanya, and I will tell you that you're getting the second smartest person in our family, 'cause she's the smartest, and she has also a school counselor by trade and a lifelong educator in her own rights. We believe in the value of education to our core and as a mission. My mother is here. Mom, would you please stand? I interviewed, the first interview I had with the School Board, they had a lean and mean hour, so they asked the question, "Tell us something about yourself." So about probably 15 minutes in, they stopped me and said, "Dr. Parker, we have to keep on going." And what I was talking about was the value of education that my mother instilled in me as a young child, and how I grew up in a city similar to Newport News in Norfolk, in the city of Norfolk, limited in means with the mother who was, at the time, a single mom, raising three children, who've instilled a value of reading and learning in her children year-round. We took the trips to the library, we picked out books, we did everything that we could do to continue learning and understand the importance of education, and that was life-changing for me. And I believe as a mission in life, I want to make sure that I'm a part of an organization that believes in building strong children, and that's what I feel Newport News City Public Schools has to offer the children in this community. We have great programs and great things going on, but what can we do better? And that's gonna be at the core of my mission in the next few years, is to figure out what's working well for us, okay? Where do we continue to build on our capacity? How do we impact lives even further to build strong children for this community? So I'm very excited about the staff who I'll be working with. I'm very excited about supporting this Board, who come to us with varying different personalities, backgrounds, and initiatives, and ideas, and it's my job to ensure that whatever drove them to run for an office, that they can, that they can realize that potential of what they came to the table to give. So my job is to make sure it happens. So, my job is to make sure it happens. I'm glad to see our city leadership here. I can promise you that I will work diligently to build bridges so that we can support our kids here, and we'll have a collegial relationship, not an adversarial one. So, I look forward to leading this fine school division. I look forward to your support moving forward. I look forward to learning from you as I move forward and implement an entry plan to move this division forward. Thank you for being here this evening. We're going to do great work together. I would be remiss if I didn't give a shout-out to my kids who are here. I believe it's always important. My daughter Kayla's a senior at VCU. My son Langston is, will be a senior in high school, and we have two other children, one's working, job, and the other's doing, on mama duty tonight. So, we're looking forward to joining this community as well. So, thank you at the top and bottom of my heart. I really appreciate it and look forward to working with you.
This concludes our 2018 Oath of Office ceremony. I'd like to thank you all for joining us this afternoon, and also invite you to stay. It's a lot hotter outside than it is inside. And continue to enjoy the reception and get to know our new Board members, returning Board members, our new superintendent, and continue to enjoy the reception in the lobby atrium. And please have a great evening. Thank you for being here tonight.